Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call our City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 6, 2019, to order. At this time, you know, we're, as we approach, we've had some challenging weather and, and we may have a little bit more, but I think it's important to note, again, thank our public work staff. They really have been doing a phenomenal job and the feedback's been very positive. I also want to give a shout out to Amy and the library staff. You know, they, you know, it's challenging for them to get into work as well, but they kept all the libraries open as warming stations. And I think that's an important step as well. So, thank you to your staff, Amy. Thank you to all of our first responders and our public works people. All of you done a great job of this and making, really, the best out of some very challenging circumstances. With that and their support, but also the people that are out there struggling with these issues, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman Mattson, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Brian, would you please call a roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clule.
Present.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to wish you a good evening and as begin this meeting of our City Council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. Also, if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under Public with Business portion of the meeting, which will occur toward the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks in no more than five minutes, and I know you all will, but I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have four public hearings this evening. Our first one is Community Development, and Alderman Rossen will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor indicated, there's one item under, under Community Development. Is this one?
Is that working now? Try it now.
I'm not getting any. There's one item under Community Develop-
Oh, there it is.
Jesus.
I hit it again.
Gotcha. Third time's a charm. Okay, one item under Community Development this evening. Public hearing for case REZ-18-18, request by Ahmed Ismail for WK Development to rezone 0.83 acres, more or less, of property located immediately northwest of the intersection of Elsie Avenue and West Kimberly Road from R5M Medium Density Residential to C2 General Commercial District in Ward 2. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up to the podium. State your name, address, and/or ward for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. My name is Charlie Armstrong. I'm a commercial real estate broker with NAI Rural Commercial Company here in Davenport, and I represent WK Development. I'm here to speak to you tonight in support of rezoning four parcels located at the northwest corner of Kimberly and North Elsie, one of these to C2. One of these is already C2, but three are currently R1. In 2003, WK Development purchased 16 acres prior to the Walmart construction, and they marketed the development as Westland Square. Since that time, they've sold a lot on the corner of Fairmont to IH Mississippi Valley Credit Union. They've built a 7,800 square foot strip mall, current tenants are Rudy's, US Cell, et cetera. They sold a lot for Culver's Restaurant. They sold a lot to Discount Tire, and thus far, this development has created over $4 million in assessed value for the city of Davenport. Since that time, these developments have paid just under $2 million in property taxes. After 15 years, two lots remain unsold. We've got a 10-acre portion in the back of this development, and then we have Lot 5, which measures .896 acres in the front, right on Kimberly. In 2004, WK Development purchased their first house at the corner of Kimberly and Elsie. The address is 3916 North Elsie. And then later on, they purchased the second house back, 3924 North Elsie. At that time, they believed that the future of this corner was commercial, and today, 14 years later, that seems to be the case. Across the street, Genesis just finished a new 43,000 square foot healthplex. The lot sits at a signalized intersection. They are across the street from a 214,000 square foot Super Walmart. Traffic counts are approximately 26,000 vehicles per day, and there are commercial buildings on all three sides. In my professional opinion, as a commercial real estate broker, the highest and best use for this corner is commercial. Based upon all of this, it's an opportune time for WK Development to develop this hard corner. After a long drought of commercial development in West Davenport, we're beginning to see some activity again. Lot 5, which has remained unsold for 15 years, is .896 acres, which is a bit small for a commercial development. The two houses at the corner, 3916 and 3924 North Elsie, total approximately .57 acres, which is also too small for a commercial development. By combining these lots, we now have 1.71 acres, which is an attractive size for, to develop commercially. I would support and recommend that these properties be zoned to C2. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
We don't answer any questions at this point.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
This item will come back up on the agenda under the Community Development.
Yep, thank you.
And if there's questions, we'll ask that time. Thanks. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And that hearing is closed, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Our second public hearing section will be under Public Works. There'll be three under there, and Alderman Dunn will lead that public, that session.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three public hearings for Public Works this evening. The first public hearing is on the plans, specifications, former contract, and estimated cost to replace the stormwater pump system at 11th and Warren. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The second public hearing is on, public hearing on the plans, specification, former contract, and estimated cost for the FY 2019, 2020 manhole rehabilitation and replacement program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The third public hearing is on the plans, specification, former contract, and estimated cost for the construction of a permeable alley, east-west alley between East River Drive and Isabel Bloom Way, from Federal Street to Tremont Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Our next, there's, there are no presentations this evening, but are there any petitions, communications from council members and myself? And let's go first to Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight, oh, sorry. Just a couple of things tonight for community engagement. If you haven't used the city's electronic reporting tool, Your Gov, now's a great time to get a lot of practice on it. We're moving into pothole season, as our recent storms have played havoc with our streets, and street crews have begun addressing these issues, but you can help by letting the city know of problem areas in your neighborhoods. There is a phone call option, but the electronic reporting is fast and easy from your computer or mobile device. You can report anonymously if you wish, so you can find out all about this and how to do it. You can sign up for these, for these other apps by going to the city's website, choose Public Works on the government drop-down menu, and then click on Make a Request for Service. And that'll get you going. It's a great way to learn how to use this tool really quickly. It's a GIS-based tool, and it's pretty terrific. Just also a reminder that the application process is still open for this year's Davenport Youth Citizens Academy. It's a nine-week, one-night-a, one-night-a-week crash course in how the city functions. It's informative, it's engaging, and it's fun. And the application is available on the city of Davenport website, so please consider this. There is a, you can call for more information, and there is a brochure there on the city's website, so please think about applying. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, and thank you for embracing this new position. I think it's going to be helpful to get more and more out about what's happening in the city and how you can get more engaged, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else with a comment? I just have a couple of quick ones. I just want to thank a number of our colleagues who are in the process of getting a chance to meet the superintendent candidates. Obviously, we are really connected with our school district. Both the city and the school system are very much involved and want to support each other, and we've been asked to be part of that selection process, so we want to thank the school district for that. Also, on Monday, there's a group of us going to be going to Chicago to talk to the bond rating agencies. We've got good news to share with our current financial situation, and we're looking forward to working the possibility of an increased bond rating, which in fact helps us do even more work for our community, so. And thank to Brandon and the staff, Linda and that whole group who will be there with us doing that process. So, that's all I have. If there's nothing else from my colleagues, we're going to move on to action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed is Community Development. Alderman, Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion. Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on the Community Development agenda for this evening. First item is a third consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-18-16, request of Rob Davis with Bush Construction to rezone 5.93 acres, more or less, of property located north of East 58th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road from CO Office Shop District to R5M Medium Density Residential District. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? You look uncertain. Coming up, come on up. Name, address, and/or ward for the record.
My name is Fran Truitt. I'm Sixth Ward, and I live at 5905 Utica Ridge Road, just north of the proposed building. Thank you for allowing me to speak. If, if you allow this, I will be looking out my front window at a 53-foot tall wall of residences. So, the whole thing has been very upsetting to me, and I'm sorry that I'm speaking again, but I will try not to be redundant. This monstrosity is in the middle of one-story homes, and I feel this is unconscionable. I have given each of you a copy of a letter from Mr. Clule that he sent to residents on 125, and I have numbered the things I want to go over. Number one, yes, it is inappropriate. Do not vote for RMF. Number two, after listening to residents at ward meetings, zonings, and city council meetings, everyone has spoken against the proposal, except one man, who lives next to the proposed two-and-a-half acres of green space. Then in number three, he goes on to threaten us that what may happen if we don't accept this proposal. He says if Bush does not get 50% occupancy, they can do whatever they want. When Bush made this proposal, they said they would not build unless they can build four stories and get 80% occupancy. When did that change? You say that Bush can convert the entire area to offices and retail. Yes, they can, but each building must be 30, under 35 foot and less than 5,000 square feet. This is very acceptable. I would much rather look out at a parking lot than a 53-foot wall, so with the 10 other people I have spoke to this week. I spoke with Matt Flynn on Monday, and this is regarding the two three-story co-ops. I spoke with Matt Flynn on Monday and asked if a three-story building could be built under CT. He said contractors generally allow 11 to 12 foot per floor, and since a roof is required, the first story would probably have to be partially underground. Would this still allow for underground parking? Would Village Co-op approve this? The proposed building is actually eight, on number five, the proposed building is actually 18 foot taller, not 10 foot taller. Number six, he admits that he promised residents that he would not support upzoning. Tom Bush also said he would never allow anything that didn't fit into the neighborhood because he and his two brothers live in Crow Valley. This is on the east side. Perhaps that is why they want to build this building on the west side. Do we feel betrayed? You bet. Mr. Clule says he has done his best, number seven, Mr. Clule says he has done his best to work with developers to represent the best interests of the Villas and Lakehurst. When he met with the 10 of us from Huntington, which will be the most affected by this, he said he was very against the co-op. You can imagine our surprise and disappointment at the next city council meeting when he told us if we make concessions, giving Bush everything they basically asked for, it would be for the best interests of the community. At our Sixth Ward meeting in January, someone suggested that the building be built to the back of the lot with landscaping in front like Bluebird Co-op, so the hundreds of people driving down Utica Ridge Road and the many people coming out of Lakehurst would see this instead of a building wall. One couple was there from the east side. They had previously said the co-op was a great idea, and, but when we suggested they build it on the east side, they were very opposed to it. So, okay in our front yard, but not okay in their backyard. There are many regulations under CT that protect the integrity of our neighborhood. We all would like to have CT. Matrix Table says that the property cannot be used for a drive-through, outdoor dining, drug treatment facility, alcohol sales, or a bar, and 86 other things. Out of 107 uses, only 21 are permitted under CT. Art galleries, community centers, or garden, cultural or daycare centers, office and personal service establishments, dwellings and personal dwellings, and a park, financial and government offices. All must be 35 foot, under 35 foot, and must include a roof. I see nothing in this that is not acceptable. If RFM goes through, they could build a residential care facility, a group home, domestic violence shelter, children's home for minors who are wards of the state, and a daycare home, plus many other things, and all of these will be at 70 feet. Please leave this property at CT and enforce the zoning rules. There is at least one new co-op being built and another less than two miles away. If you drive by this co-op on Crow Creek, I think you agree with me that nothing about it says $300,000, $500,000 condos. Bush and Village Co-op built this one, too. Am I be allowed to finish? I've got just one more paragraph. Blackbird is one-half mile away and is not even fully occupied. Do we really need another co-op? I can't imagine any of you would be glad to have a building taller and bigger than Wells Fargo in your neighborhood, let alone in your front yard. We are a neighborhood, too. Please do not vote RFM or the covenants. Please consider the many residents that this will affect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would, come on up, state your name and address and/or ward?
Hi. My name is Sue Gabel, and I live at 5907 Utica Ridge Road. I choose to believe in the integrity of the system. I, our homes for Becky Meyer, RJ Dixon, the Gentry Shop, Lakehurst residents, and the Villas have all honored the covenants of this land. So, yes, I choose to believe in the integrity of the system. I think it's been set up, and for a reason. So, here we are. Alderman Clule graciously sat in my living room, listening and talking with 10 of us about our thoughts. He stated at that time that he would not support a change from the CT ordinance, and I choose to believe in his integrity as well. We as homeowners, who have also invested in the land, have made the Bush property very attractive, so I would ask that they continue to respect the area homeowners, as well as other business owners, and provide a plan that would fit into a 35-foot, low-density, transitional structure. Two blocks north, Blackbird Commons, which was built about 14 years ago, is still not filled to capacity. Those units were advertised as upscale. Theoretically, if Bush cannot get his 50 to 80% occupancy that, that he needs, he will be in a position to resell the property to other developers. The buyer could potentially build to the 70-foot height offered by the RMF zoning. It is our position that this proposed structure is totally out of place for our neighborhood. There's nothing around there close that is of this height. So, mere clips and city council members, I choose to believe in the integrity of your system. We would ask that you deny the request for a four-story high-rise, that would be almost 20-foot higher than the Wells Fargo or American Bank two blocks south of us, and keep the CT zoning for our neighborhood. So, I thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Oh, sorry, I didn't see ya. My apologies. Name, address, for the record.
Rob Davis with Bush Construction. I don't disagree that this property has sat vacant for a long time, and while there is certainly some benefit to the surrounding neighborhood for this thing to remain green space, it's just, the fact is, it's not, it's not the best use of the space. We could certainly try to shrink the building down, but we've put a lot of time and energy into putting together our pro forma that says this is the size of the building that we need to have to make this property work. It's a very expensive piece of property. To, to address kind of the 53-foot wall consideration, we've taken into consideration, we'll do, as I've mentioned before and shown some descriptions or some photos, we'll have landscaping, we'll have berms, lines of sight from both Utica Ridge, 58th, and surrounding neighborhoods to the north and east. They're really all blocked by the trees, so it's not something that's sitting directly in your living space. We've met with city council, or with, with the city planners. We've met with Alderman Clule and discussed some, making some concessions here and setbacks greater than what are required to ease kind of that, that visual impact, if you will. We've made some concessions as to floor-to-floor heights and the maximum height of the building that I think are very livable. Again, we're not building a sterile, commercial, normal commercial building here. This is a residential-style construction property, and if I say so myself, it's, it's a good-looking building. Again, we just ask for your consideration. Planning and zoning is sought to, to approve this for, recommend this for approval. I wouldn't disagree with their recommendations at this point. And again, we're, we're willing to work with, with the neighborhoods and doing our best to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, anyone from council? Alderman Clule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to express my appreciation for the residents who showed up tonight to talk about their neighborhood. This has been a fairly lengthy process that we've gone through, and I do appreciate the accommodation that the Gabels gave to me to meet in their home with, with neighbors there. I've met with, with other residents from both sides of Utica Ridge, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. Of course, we had our two community meetings to talk about this issue, to try to, to figure out what's going on there, number one. And I know some people were concerned that they didn't feel that they were adequately contacted in time, and Alderman McGinnis and I are going to be working with community planning and economic development to try to make sure that that process works perhaps more smoothly in the future. I, I've, I've, I've bored the city council to death with explaining every session where I stand, but I know we have a new audience every time, so I think just briefly to, to go through my position. And, and let me stay right up front, that this is my intention to make an amendment during the next city council meeting as follows. I will move to approve RMF with two covenants. The following two covenants being, one, the development of the site be limited to one multifamily structure, not to exceed four stories above grade, and one level of underground parking. The maximum story height shall not exceed 12 feet floor-to-floor. Number two, the structure will be located in the southwest portion of the site, with no portion of the development being closer than 40 to 50 feet from any property line or street. Now, let me explain a little bit about my rationale, and Fran, I do appreciate you bringing up my letter. I, I wanted to share that with the folks that were most interested. I didn't expect it to come before the council, and of course, you paraphrased in a number of places and inserted comments of your own. So, I do take ownership for the majority of it, but perhaps not all of the comments that were made, because I don't think there was any intent on yours to, to misquote me, but I want to make clear that, that I said early on that I would not support RMF, and I will not support RMF without conditions. RMF is totally wrong. Building to 70 feet is not appropriate. It's not transitional. Now, I want to speak honestly. I, I have concerns that four stories is not the kind of transitional that I would like to see. It's not. But I found in, in this area of trying to deal with developers and residents sitting up here, it's important to try to listen to all sides and then come up in the end with something that we could perhaps all live with called consensus. It's a consensus-building exercise, so that's, that's why I've spent all this time talking to neighbors, and I know, I know you folks aren't happy with this amendment that I'm proposing, but I believe that in the long run, for current residents, for residents yet to come, it's the best decision for us in Davenport. I made a, I made a position very clear when we rezoned the area there adjacent to 56th and Utica Ridge, when we changed it from CO to C1, that that area surrounding the hair salon, I would, would never support upzoning to that neighborhood, because I felt it's a residential area. The salon was fine, because it's right next to Utica Ridge, near an arterial, but I said the rest of that area is too close to homes to upzone. Now, with the current rezoning ordinance that passed, the Villas are now RMF. The proposal is RMF. Again, I think it's important to recognize that this is RM with conditions. There'll be no, there'll be nothing other than residential in that area with RMF, and that includes Bush, or if Bush does not sell to occupancy at 50%, to any other land owner that wants to build in that area. That area is zoned, will be zoned RMF. These two conditions will follow that land. So, the good thing about the RMF then is that it's a smaller footprint. We have perhaps 62 units versus 92 if Bush were to build under CT. We maintain that, and of course, that contingent traffic that's involved with the additional 30 units would be significant to the area. So, it's for those reasons and perhaps more, and I will fully explain this during the next meeting, but I just wanted the council and the public to be aware that this is my intent to move to amend next council session. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clule. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. I've, you know, consistently been consistent in my position on this. You know, before our rezoning last month, in the, under the old zoning code, this, this property was 20, the, the limit would have been 25 feet. The owners of the property with the new zoning were gifted an, an additional 10 feet and could zone, could, you know, build at 35 feet. And it's interesting to me that they would, in the process of that, choose to be planning something that was 15 feet taller than that, or more than 15 feet higher than, it's over double what it was last year at this time, if, which was 25 feet. And there's a good reason why it was 25 feet, and there's a good reason, I believe, that staff chose to zone this CT in the new, in the new zoning. There is, you know, a three-story building in that area, there's already run down the street, and it fits into the landscape there. It feels appropriate along the street. A four, a four-story building, a 50-story building, or plus 50-plus story building, There is no, there is no, it just doesn't seem like we're doing the best for our city or the best for this neighborhood, and it seems grossly out of scale to me, continues to feel that way. I've listened to a lot of residents. I did go to one of the meetings. I've had, certainly, this is a very active neighborhood. There's been a lot of emails from them as well that everybody has, has gotten. There's been lots of conversation and there's no support except one email that I've seen for, from residents for this building. So, I, I have a very difficult time changing. Even with the covenants, there is no, I hear no covenant that protects the land from being split apart, which was one thing that was proposed last week, I think. There was some discussion of a covenant that they would never build on the green space. So, I, I don't see why, this should be acceptable in any way. I urge my council members, my fellow members, to look at this very carefully, to think about the implications to this neighborhood. But I will continue to vote as I have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Anyone else from council would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will remain on discussion. Second item on community development agenda. Third consideration, ordinance for case REZ eighteen-seventeen, request of Tim Schaefer, Dale Service Center, to rezone nineteen-fifteen Zenith Avenue from R four, moderate-density dwelling district to C two, general commercial district. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that item will move on. Next item, third consideration, ordinance for case REZ eighteen-nineteen, request of St. Ambrose University for rezoning from R four, moderate-density dwelling district and C two, general commercial district to PID, Planned Institutional District on point-six-seven-five acres, more or less, and an amendment to a PID Planned Institutional District Land Use Plan for the property located west of Harrison Street, north of West Locust Street, east of Brown Street, and south of West Lombard Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number four, first consideration, ordinance for case REZ eighteen-eighteen, request by Ahmed Ismail for WK Development to rezone zero-point-eight-three acres, more or less, of property located immediately northwest of the intersection of Elsie Avenue and West Kimberly Road from R five M, medium-density residential, to C two, general commercial district. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Alderman Ambrose, would you please set the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Keep the first item on discussion and the rest of them move to consent. I make a motion.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Same sign? Very good. That concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen and Alderman, Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Grip will lead that discussion. Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll begin with item number one, a second consideration, ordinance amending Schedule Six of Chapter ten-point-nine-six, entitled Speed Limits by adding Jason Way from Veterans Memorial Parkway to the end of Jason Way Court as a thirty-five mile-per-hour street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration, ordinance amending Schedule Six of Chapter ten-point-nine-six, entitled Speed Limits by adding Seventy-Sixth Street from Northwest Boulevard to Division Street as a forty-mile-per-hour street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number three is a first consideration, ordinance amending Schedule One of Chapter ten-point-nine-six, entitled Snow Routes by Adding and Deleting Various Streets. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item moves on. Item number four is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on listed dates to hold outdoor events. I'll read them all and then ask for comments. John Parker, Chili Chase Run, Sunday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, eleven-thirty a.m. to three p.m. Lane closures, East Pleasant Street from Fernwood Avenue to Forest Road, Forest Road from East Pleasant to East George Washington Boulevard, East George Washington Boulevard from Forest Road to Jersey Ridge Road, Duck Creek Trail Parkway from Jersey Ridge Road returning to Duck Creek Lodge. QC SO, SO Symphony Day, River Center Adler Theater, Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, seven-thirty a.m. to two-thirty p.m. Lane closures for bus parking, two north lanes of East Third from Brady to Iowa Street. And Gonzo's Mexican Restaurant, Gonzo's Five K, Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and nineteen, five-thirty a.m. to eleven a.m. Lane closures northbound, North Marquette from West Kimberly to West Forty-first Street, West Forty-first from Marquette to Division, northbound Division from West Forty-first to West Fifty-third, eastbound from West Fifty-third from Division to Northwest Boulevard, southbound Northwest Boulevard from West Fifty-third to Taylor, Taylor from Northwest Boulevard to West Fifty-second Street, West Fifty-second slash Garner, Garner Drive from Taylor to West Fifty-first, West Fifty-first from West Fifty-second slash Garner Drive to Fillmore Lane, Fillmore Lane from West Fifty-first to West Forty-sixth and West Forty-sixth Street from Fillmore Lane to Marquette. Marquette from West Forty-sixth to Finish Line at Gonzo's Restaurant. And you will be tired and need a beer after running that. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any of those three items? Anyone from the council? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Alderman Grip. I just want to say on Gonzo's, it's a great thing and they, and they do it for a great cause of autism. So, they give a lot of money to that cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no other comments, I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
I'm a little tired after just hearing you read the whole thing. I move that all items be placed on consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? That concludes public safety. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much to both Alderman Grip and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead that discussion and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have sixteen items on the Public Works agenda this evening. First item is a second consideration for an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter eight-point-one-four, the tree ordinance, to perform general language cleanup and clarify the following definition of trees in the right-of-way. Maintenance of city-owned trees permitting licensing and nuisance tree abatement process. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? You guys have to raise your hand if you... Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration, ordinance amending various sections of Chapter ten for the purpose of allowing the city of Davenport the ability to immobilize vehicles in lieu of towing and simplifying fine schedules. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution acceptance of the FY eighteen Sewer Lateral Program completed by Peterson Plumbing and Heating of Davenport, Iowa with a final cost of five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution, the acceptance of the FY eighteen Sewer Lateral Repair Program completed by Hometown Plumbing and Heating of Davenport, Iowa with a final cost of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and three cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this will move on. Item number five is a resolution of acceptance for the FY eighteen Sewer Lateral Program completed by Tappendorf Plumbing of Davenport, Iowa with a final cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six, a resolution of acceptance of the FY eighteen Sewer Lateral Repair Program completed by Riverbend Plumbing of Bettendorf, Iowa with a final cost of ninety-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution of acceptance of the FY eighteen Sewer Lateral Program completed by Hagerty Earthworks of Muscatine, Iowa with a final cost of ninety-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution of acceptance of the Twenty-Ninth, Lorton, and Fairhaven Drainage Improvement Project completed by Legacy Corporation of Eastmont Lane with a final cost of one-million, four-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan, specification, and form of contract and the estimated cost for the FY two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty manhole rehabilitation and replacement program. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number ten is a resolution of acceptance for the Duck Creek South Interceptor Rehabilitation Project completed by S and K Construction LLC of Olafoln, Missouri with a final cost of four-million, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eleven is a resolution accepting work completed under the two thousand and eighteen Microsurfacing and Cape Seal Program. The total contract with Lionmark Corporation was four-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number twelve is a resolution acceptance of the Federal Street Sewer Improvement Project completed by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa with a final cost of seven-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Number, number thirteen is a resolution approving the plan, specification, and form of contract and estimated cost for the construction of a permeable alley, east-west alley between East River Drive and Isabel Bloom Way from Federal Street to Tremont Avenue. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Step forward and state your name and...
I'm Kathy Wine. I'm a resident of Davenport, but more importantly, I have an office right on this alley and I'm ecstatic and I want to thank you for this project. We, we need it. We get to work with Amy Kay, which is wonderful. We've been able to put some funding towards the project ourselves, twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred towards it. And we're going to do some programs this summer and bring people there and put some signage up. It's a wonderful thing to have the first permeable alley right there. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number fourteen is a resolution approving the plan, specification, and form of contract and estimated cost to replace the stormwater pump system at Eleventh and Warren. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number fifteen is a resolution approving the contract for the Miracle Field of the Quad Cities Phase Two to Precision Builders Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number sixteen, a motion approving change order number one to McClure Engineering Company in the amount of eighty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars for the Davenport Municipal Airport Runway, fifteen-thirty-three reconstruction project. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to put all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I was tempted to ask you to go through that list one more time, but we'll just move on. Our last area to be discussed is finance, and Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion and Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance discussion items, we have five. So, number one is a resolution setting February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen as the date for the sale of General Obligation Corporate Bonds, Series two thousand and nineteen, and approving the preliminary official statement. Anybody from the public like to comment on that in-depth item? Counsel? Number two, resolution approving the contract for Printer Maintenance Services to Manage Solutions Group of Dubuque, Iowa. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Very good. Number three, a motion approving professional service agreements for golf professional services with Brant McGivern, Matthew Hazely, and Ronnie Thrapp at Red Hawk, Duck Creek, and E-Mice Golf Courses, respectively. Anybody from the public like to comment on that? Counsel? Very good. Number four, motion setting a public hearing for the FY two thousand and twenty operating budget, FY two thousand and twenty capital improvement budget, and the FY two thousand and twenty-two, FY two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement program for February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Anyone from the public comment? Counsel? Very good. Last item, and staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage later in the agenda. It's on the same page, so you'll see it. And then number five, motion approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Davenport and the Union of Professional Police of Davenport for the, for the term July twenty-nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. So, that's a pretty serious, good contract. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Very good. Then, of course, we have a couple items for your information. We don't read them for your discussion. So, I'll ask Alderman Clul to recommend an agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. I move that all items with the, move forward to the consent agenda. Item four is recognized moving forward. We'll resurface at section eleven of this meeting.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good, Your Honor. We're back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderwoman Clul. Our item number eleven on our agenda, other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. We have one. I ask for a motion for the suspension of the rules to add and vote on the following item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
And Grip?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion setting the public hearing for FY two thousand and twenty operating budget, FY two thousand and twenty capital improvement budget, and FY two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement program for February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there any, anybody from the public who wants to talk about that? Anybody from council? Will an Alderman move the motion? It's been moved and seconded. And now, I guess I can ask if there's any discussion, further discussion. Seeing none, will you recall the roll, please, Brian?
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkin?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you, and that motion is passed. And our public hearing will be set for February thirteenth. Is there any public with business tonight? Seeing no one, or are there any other reports of city officials? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Same sign? Adjourned. Adjourn.